School is in, but are you really ready to learn? Open your eyes to a new day in education with the Awakening Educator, a program specifically designed to explore a new mindful way of educating our youth. Learn about social emotional learning, new modalities of teaching, and the most relevant topics in education with your hosts Susan Andrian and Megan Sweet. Susan and Megan will take you inside the issues by looking at them from different points of view. From policies and research to teaching models that are actually used in schools. There's never a dull moment in this classroom. Um, have any questions you'd like to ask? Maybe you have knowledge you'd like to share and share your thoughts live on air. Grab a pen and paper and get ready to open your textbooks and minds to a new way of learning on the Awakening Educator.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Awakening Educator. I am so excited today. We are going to be talking with Troy Flint, who works for the California School Board Association. And he'll be giving us a statewide perspective on on distance learning, what he's seeing across the state of California as different school districts are grappling with this issue. So welcome Troy. I'm real excited to have you. Before we get in, it would be great to give a little bit of background about who you are and what your role is.
Thank you. I'm the Chief Information Officer for the California School Boards Association. We represent almost all the school districts in the state of California, around 1,000 districts, slightly less than 1,000 districts. And we represent all the county offices of education. We are advocating for policies which will strengthen public schools and support students and trying to defeat legislation that we think will be harmful for that goal. We also provide an extensive amount of training for governance teams, primarily school board members and also superintendents to a certain degree. And we provide many other services to school districts. And we also host an annual conference, which is the biggest education, training and professional development event in the state of California. But first and foremost, we're probably known for our legislative advocacy on behalf of schools.
Thank you Troy for joining us. And I will say that I'm very excited to be making this connection with you in my new role as a school board member myself. So I'm sure we'll be able to connect more on that as well. Um, yeah, so Susan and I wanted to reach out to you because we were just curious about, um, you know, we wanted to understand more the policy implications or impacts of distance learning. So maybe you can just give us a little bit of a grounding from your, from your standpoint. What are some of the key issues that show up for us when we think about distance learning and that transition this year?
I'd say the two primary issues related to distance learning are effectiveness and equity. How well is distance learning working in terms of supporting instruction? And in terms of supporting student learning? And then how even is effective student learning occurring in a distance or remote learning model? And quite frankly, there are issues with both. I think school districts have tried to move mountains in a crisis response situation. But many districts were working from such a deficit in terms of capacity, in terms of resources, and in terms of the planning that had gone into distance learning, that it has not been uniformly effective statewide. You see great variance in terms of that effectiveness and that has implications for equity. This is not universally the case, but more often than not, the students that are experiencing the greatest disadvantage in a distance learning mode are those who are lower income, those who are in difficult home situations, and disproportionately students of color. And that reflects what we see in most aspects of our school system. Like we see in society at large, the crisis we're experiencing because of the pandemic has just exacerbated inequities and has kind of laid bare some of the unfairness in our society. And if there is a silver lining out of something so terrible, I hope it's that this causes us to refocus and renewed attention on addressing some of these disparities, particularly in education, which has received more attention than I've ever seen in the 15 years that I've worked in, in public schools or in the public education field. And you know, normally there's national focus on schools twice a year, right around back to school and then around prom and graduation. This is the first time that there's been, I think, sustained focus from people who are in education woks or who don't necessarily have a kid in school or just aren't passionate about education as their hobby or field of interest. This is the first time I think education has been near the top of the news cycle and been a dominant part of the national conversation for an extended period, certainly in a generation, maybe ever. And so this is a crisis that also presents an opportunity if we as a society are going to take it seriously. And I think distance learning is sort of a microcosm of that. You have a state which is the fifth largest economy in the world, if it were to be judged as an independent country. It's a state that is home to Silicon Valley, the epicenter of the global technology industry. Yeah, just down the road from Silicon Valley, you have tens of thousands of people that don't have reliable broadband access. And we trail many other countries in that respect. You know, California is supposed to be the home of resourcefulness, of innovation and creativity. We like to think of ourselves that way. And we like to think of ourselves, or at least some Californians like to see us as, you know, one of the most progressive states. But that isn't always reflected in our institutional practice. And I think it's most glaring when you see that there are about 1 million students that don't have reliable broadband access. Now, there's a range of different reasons for that. And I feel like I've been talking a long time. So if you want to break in with a follow-up question, we can explore that.
Yeah, well, there are so many, there are so many questions like that branch off from what you were saying. I was like, oh, wait, oh, no, now we're going someplace else. So I do want to go back to a couple of questions around the opportunity that comes out of crisis. Because for me, that's where I've been trying to stay grounded. I do crisis work. I'm the mental health person. I'm thinking about the wellness of all of our families that have been disconnected. And so this idea of like, as we're trying to meet the needs of folks on the ground in the moment that it's happening, at the same time, what are we thinking and learning that will help shift our policies and practices when we come back in a way that improves education overall? Again, I think as you said, that the equity gap has been magnified under this current situation. And then so what are we going to do as a state to start to address these in real systemic ways?
So the legislative session just started this week. And the speaker of the assembly has indicated that broadband is going to be one of our priorities. We'll see if they follow through on that. Last year, there were a couple pieces of legislation that would have increased broadband access. They wouldn't have achieved universal broadband access, but they would have expanded access significantly. Neither of those bills even made it out of committee, let alone come to the, to the full house for a vote. And that's due in large part to aggressive lobbying by the telecom and cable industry, which is one of the most aggressive and well-heeled lobbying outfits. You know, they throw a lot of money around in Sacramento and you tend to get results when you do that. So we were very disappointed by that. We also were working to try and get a bond on the most recent ballot. This is something that we developed in the aftermath of the crisis, where we were trying to get something approaching universal broadband for California. That didn't, also didn't have legs, but we are revisiting that idea again for this session. And there are a couple of other ways that we're looking at trying to expand broadband access legislatively. And it's good to hear that other people are, are working in that vein as well. There's a legislator, I believe, R. Curry, who I believe has a bill. And I believe Lena Gonzalez also has a bill. So we'll see what happens along those lines. But that's just the technology piece. I know that you're of course both educators. So then there's a lot of work to be done, you know, in terms of pedagogy, in terms of curriculum. And how, once you get beyond the platform, how are you using that effectively?
Yeah.
And there's a lot of concern there. We've seen attendance numbers drop. We don't have really comprehensive data yet for the state. But whatever patchwork data we can get shows that a lot of kids are checking out or at least are not able.
Yeah, that was another area I was gonna, because as, as a district, and I sit on a lot of the service, coordination of services team meetings. And this dilemma of engagement versus attendance and, and how the state is collecting that data. So I was actually, I mean, I'm sure that's a bigger dilemma, but that, but I'm seeing it as it gets down to the ground level of like, well, what does it mean to be attending versus engaged versus learning in terms of policy?
Yeah. So I mean, I think the guidelines are a little bit unclear and that may be by design. There is logging a kid online and then there's actually two-way communication where the student is engaged, you know, obviously that's the goal. We're not even really meeting our, our base goals in, in terms of attendance and engagement, certainly not. We're seeing, based on some surveys that are being done, that the Ds and Fs are skyrocketing, which is not a complete indicator of engagement, but is a pretty good, pretty well correlated to the fact when you have huge year-over-year increases in something like that, that engagement is not there. So I think there, you're going to see civil rights groups who are looking for something more substantive, your Ed Trust West and groups like that. And I think that's partly what's driving this campaign of sorts to really get kids back in school. And I think we have mixed emotions about that. We certainly want school to start as soon as it's responsible to do so. I mean, nobody wants to get to school back more than, than educators. That's why teachers got into this profession. School board members want to resume school. They're hearing from the parents in their community and parents certainly want their kids to go back to school. So I think everybody has the same goals, but there's different standards or different perceptions of what's safe. So one thing we're going to be doing is really advocating for the state legislators or governor to do more than just say, we need you to go back to school. We want them to look really seriously at the concerns that some stakeholders are expressing, whether that's board members or teachers or parents around what would make them feel safe to get back to school in terms of the frequency of the testing, in terms of the logistics around that, in terms of the screening, in terms of having some reliable data, then you down to the community or the zip code level to show the spread or rate of infection in various areas. And I think that's where we need to focus to a certain extent because the problems of distance learning are not going to be resolved in the next year. So I think the goal.
I mean, that's a good question. I mean, I'm sorry I had to interrupt Troy. But I mean, that's the thing, right? Like, so as you were talking, I was like, right, we need to, we need to solve these short-term issues with, you know, I think broadband's a great solution. And to your point, like, that will, that helps on one level. And that also sounds like it's far enough away that it's really not going to impact this year probably. And, you know, even if kids are accessing the internet, I mean, I can watch all day and see how disengaged my kid is and catch him on his phone while also on the screen, you know, and, and his level of learning not so great. And I'm an educator and I'm in the house and I'm watching him. And I'm also just seeing, you know, he's struggling. So that's, I mean, and that's one of the things that actually, one of the teachers that when we interviewed them, they brought up, which was, um, kids will have been out of school, some of them for a year or more by the time they show back up again. So what, so like, so there's the like, we need to address like these immediate issues around like access and how long the pandemic is. But then there's also this whole thing of like, when kids come back, there are going to be all these impacts of kids being away for so long from school, from, from, for the social aspect, from the learning aspect, from, yeah, equity. You know, all those equity concerns that you named are going to be that much more exacerbated after a year of this kind of distance learning where some kids aren't showing up to school at all. So you're naming like attendance rates and, you know, I happen to know in, in one town just outside of, I mean, within Silicon Valley, I think the attendance rate dropped to like 30%, something horrible in a low-income community within, you know, the wealthy Silicon Valley area. So when you think about all those things in this, like, so there's the, so there's like two problems. I imagine the state level, people are trying to focus on, which is like, okay, there's the immediate thing. And then there's just planning ahead. And I'm just wondering, and you're hearing from school districts across the state, are there any tea leaves we can read or things that we should be knowing are going to, going to be coming around these long-term implications for this as well as the short-term issues? Because it's, it's both, right? And maybe that's too big of a question, but.
So short-term, there's a member, Phil Ting, who's very influential. He's from San Francisco, Chair of the Budget Committee. So he has submitted a bill, AB 10, I believe it's AB 10, which would basically require that as soon as a district emerges from the most severe categories of COVID-19 spread, that within two weeks, they have a plan for returning to school. And many districts are already deep in, in the process of making those plans. Susan, you work for Oakland USD and they've already submitted their plan to the Alameda County Office of Education and many other districts around the state have as well. Others are still waiting to try and get a better picture of what's happening and then also to try and come to terms with their labor unions because returning to work in this environment is going to require what's called, this is a little bit of legalese, but material change to work conditions. And under legal statute, anything that requires a material change to work conditions has to be bargained. So there's so much uncertainty that complicates the bargaining process. And so that's why some districts maybe are not as far along when people are looking in from the outside. And I think some people have misinterpreted that as negligence or some sort of unwillingness to return to school. And then there are other people who I think somewhat more disingenuously know that it's more complicated than that, but have tried to frame this as governance teams are not really committed to going back to school because that's just an easier way to position it and get people excited. So we're hoping that there'll be less of that demagoguing and more grappling with the, the concerns that people have about returning to school, whether it's safe and that the state will do more. And hopefully the federal government will do more as, you know, we see some fresh blood to provide that support so states can meet these pretty reasonable requests that a lot of the stakeholders have.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So that's helpful. And I'm like, yeah, because the opening, I mean, I think in my school district, I don't think we have a plan out yet for a similar reason, which is, you know, actually we had a plan, we were planning to reopen in January and right when school came back. But now with the, you know, because not only is it like developing a plan, there's dealing with the fact that there's going to be, you know, dealing with wherever the county is. So they, we had a plan to reopen in January. I have, really, yes.
This is one of the joys of working from home. This is actually being recorded, so please try to work with me. Thank you.
And I just want to see her. So, but then we had to push it all off because we're going to be, you know, because now we're in higher COVID numbers, right? And so, and so then the plan has to move forward again. And it's almost like then you have to restart the needle, the, the conversation all over again. Because we negotiated for a certain start time and did all that kind of thinking. And now there's this like this pushback and the numbers are more severe. And what does that mean? And actually, one of the things that we're most concerned with is of teachers taking time off or like, or not being able to come in or being able to have access to subs. So if a teacher is sick, even if we do open back up again, and I'm seeing this in a few places, I'm wondering what your thoughts are. You know, schools have to close back down again or they have to, like, I've heard of a school recently that had to close back down because too many of their teachers were sick and they didn't have enough subs. So I'm just wondering, like, so there's like the opening and then there's like the nuts and bolts of opening that feel really hard.
Yeah, that's a great point. Thanks for mentioning that. It's probably something I should have referenced earlier. But yes, the issue of staffing is huge. In a lot of districts, it can be challenging to get subs in a normal environment, let alone when people are worried about catching a potentially fatal disease. So that's something that districts are grappling with. And then if you have, if you have an agreement where you have people who feel that it's unsafe to resume their job on campus because they're not satisfied with the standards or because they have a, you know, compromised person in their home, they have some sort of pre-existing condition, how are you going to backfill those positions? And is the person, the substitute that you're calling in going to provide a reasonable level of instruction, particularly for long-term subs or something like that? That isn't, you can luck into something like that, but I don't think that's the norm. So that's something that I don't think people who haven't worked in districts and dealt with some of these logistics and operations necessarily appreciate. But, but it's a very real challenge that our members are confronting. And there's no magical pool out there. I mean, teaching is not like some other jobs where you can just pull somebody else, right? Right. So there's, there's no magical pool that we can draw from.
I'm curious as we talk about this, and I've been curious about, curious about this since the beginning. I think is, is I've watched districts in my district and other districts grapple with like, should we be just biding our time and doing the best we can and investing in, in getting ready to come back? Or should we just like assume we're not going to come back and, and invest heavily in doing this and doing this well? And, and the like, it feels like this dilemma of what, where do we put all of our most, our energy? And then thinking about those teachers that are being asked to do hybrid in the class, it's doing both, right? Your teaching live and your teaching, the families that don't want to come back in and sort of that, that demand. And how have your constituents had to grapple with? Like, where do, where do we put our eggs? We only have so many. Where do we put them?
Right. So like I mentioned at the outset, we have about 1,000 school districts that we represent all over the state. So you've got LA Unified, the second biggest district, over 600,000 students, second biggest district in the country, over 600,000 students. And then we have a district with four students. So I think we have something like 100 districts in this state that have fewer than 100 students total, the whole district.
Wow.
So you're going to run the gamut, urban, suburban, rural, enormous and really tiny. And that's why CSBA has traditionally been a strong advocate for local control. Obviously, on issues of public health and safety, you're working within a certain frame. But provided you satisfy those standards, there's room for these individual school districts to work with the local county health office and determine what makes sense for them. We certainly have districts in more remote regions of the state, far northern California, the high desert, getting further down south, who have been in school for a few months now and largely without incident. And then we've had other districts that have returned, maybe only for a week or two, shut down. Others that have been open for longer and shut down. We have districts that have more or less gone back in full. We have districts that have done the hybrid approach you were talking about. We've had districts which have created sort of special pods or cohorts for high-need students or students with disabilities and really focused on that. Whereas the other students who maybe are better served in, who can be served more effectively through a distance learning model are having that sort of education. So there's really no universal standard in terms of how people are approaching it. It really reflects the local conditions, the demographics, and to be honest, the, the political affinities of the particular communities and how they, they view the virus and how harmful it is. So that's a blessing and a curse. It does give our, our school districts room to maneuver and to take feedback from their local constituents or stakeholders and craft a plan that makes sense for them based on that. The downside, the curse of it is that, you know, sometimes maybe school districts could benefit from more guidance or they want more guidance, particularly for governing board members, superintendents and school boards who are making these tough decisions. Sort of having the stamp of state approval or falling back on this is the, you know, what the state has required helps them communicate to the public why they're doing what they're doing. And now they're kind of standing on their own a little bit more. So I think you're seeing people struggling. My perspective is most of the big districts will be challenged to go back before like what would be the normal spring break. And there'll probably be some districts that don't return at all this school year or what the typical school year would be. And then again, you'll have some, some districts that will have been in school almost the whole year. So I mean, again, that goes back to that equity question. We haven't even talked about private schools and the fact that a lot of them have been able to go back, small class sizes, more resources are more easily deployed. The whole logistics of it are just simpler in most cases. And what is, what does that mean? But again, the governor's children attend private school and they went back, but then they had to shut down. So that just sort of illustrates the challenges that everyone is facing.
Yeah, that's a great, I mean, I think this has been such a helpful, this frame, understanding of, you know, the state of California is so big and it's a good way of thinking about the whole country. Because you're right, there's this range of, of, of districts and of experiences that across the state and across the country, depending on all those different factors you named, location, local government, how seriously they're taking or not taking the pandemic, union implications and access to funds and therefore access or ability to be flexible. And then you add in access to technology and these challenges with the effectiveness of remote instruction, which, you know, you know, even in places where they're doing it, it pretty strongly, that's also a huge range. So I know in some school districts, kids are learning their full school day all, all day. They are going to every single class all day. In my school district, they've actually chosen to, to do it in half. So he only goes to half of his required subjects this semester and then he'll go to the other half next semester. So my son hasn't had math since last June, for example. And he won't get it again until mid-January. But he's been intensive with English right now. So every district is making these different choices. And then we're looking. Oakland's doing the mini-masters, so they're doing that, but they're shorter periods of time. So my daughter's at Tech and they're doing mini-masters. So it's, she only has some of her classes, but it's like, not a full semester. Something instead of a semester, yeah. So, so there's this whole mishmash of things going on. And you'd imagine like the scale of the state of California. And we have kids that are in, we haven't even gotten into like the social emotional impacts of this, of like the isolation of kids that are home in unsafe spaces, all of it. So, and then I'm, I'm looking towards next year. At some point, we're going to have a, the pandemic is going to end or we're going to have a vaccine that's going to allow us to start to resume some form of, of more, I don't want to say the word normal, but of like back to school time. What are some of the things that legislators are, as they're looking ahead to the future or as you and your, from your standpoint, what are those key issues or things that we need to start paying attention to or thinking about now as we prepare for, let's say, nine months from now and we're back in, in school starting again?
I think the main consideration is how do we address the disruption that students have experienced over the past nine months? Both, as you mentioned, in terms of experiencing potential trauma or just having an unstable situation in the home or experiencing alienation from not having regular face-to-face interaction with people or maybe losing their, their support system at school. You, obviously, schools, people who work at schools are mandated reporters. Those people are not having regular interaction with their students. Sometimes teachers are, are confident. So this sort of safety net that's kind of built into the school system to support kids, it's very difficult to provide that same sort of service or care remotely. So how do we address some of the negative experiences that students are, are having because of that? And then there's addressing the disruption that students are experiencing from an academic standpoint. And that actually brings up another topic. I don't think legislators are really keyed into this yet. But certainly the State Board of Education is and the Federal Department of Education is. And that's around testing and assessments. Because a big question is, you know, how do you know where to begin and where to focus your energies on supporting students academically? When you don't really have good information on what happened the last year and where they stand. But then there's also compelling counterarguments against trying to do some sort of serious testing regimen when you have these issues we talked about, like the digital divide and lack of technology access. When you have people who, when you have students who are at homes that are maybe not really well-suited for testing. So is the data you're going to get going to include all students? And is it going to be meaningful or reliable? So these are the questions we're working toward. And CSBA hasn't established a position on this yet, but certainly one that we, I shouldn't say we haven't established a firm position, but we've been leaning towards some sort of short-form testing, a much more abbreviated assessment period and a shorter test, just to give us some kind of data that we can use to try and figure out how much learning loss has there been? And where are students? So we can meet them there and provide the right supports and interventions to kind of find that balance between not doing something that's too invasive at a time when people are vulnerable and struggling, but also getting the information that we need to help them best. So that, where the disruption of one year doesn't become the disruption of multiple years of education. So I think that's what the, where the focus should be.
That, that balance of that tension between assess, how much to assess is just going to be magn, it sounds like. Because that tension's always there. You know, we're always hearing that with the balance between assessment and, and teaching our kids, like the, the stress of that. And so it's just magnified because now we have all this learning loss. But there's also probably learning gains in ways that are really different. Or like, how are we digging in and finding those other opportunities that we are learning from? Like, there's a study in The Atlantic that came out that high school kids on, on some level were, were happier because they were more rested and, and, and they, you know, so there was less depression for a subset of teenagers because they were getting more sleep and spending more time with their family. So just sort of thinking about, I think that there's these ways that the tension always comes up. And assessment feels like one of those, like, really charged areas.
Yeah, it's going to be a big battle, I think, in Sacramento and in states across the, the country. That's something that I can definitely see looming.
This has been such a helpful conversation. And I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here with my mind reeling about all the implications of this and what a big, you know, impact this is going to have. You're right, for a generation of learners. And my hope is that we come out of this stronger and better and that we take this opportunity to do some things differently. But it's just the scale of the impact can't be understated. And it's, I appreciate just your depth of knowledge on that. So thanks for, for joining us today. This was really, really helpful.
No, it's great to have these conversations. And one last point before I go is, I think the state has taken steps to sort of be a convener of practices where districts come together to discuss practices and others can learn and replicate from them. But I think that's going to be even more critical here as we, we get back to school. So I hope to see more of that work on a regional and a statewide level.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, the roles that the state's playing is going to be a big deal.
Super appreciate that and super appreciate your visitor that I can hear. Hi.
That's Monty, the little one.
That's a homeschool reality. Homework. Thank you so much, Troy.
They did such a good job for so long. They had it. They want dad back. Thank you, Troy, for your time. It was really wonderful. Thanks for joining us. Bye. We're always happy to greet you on the next episode of The Awakening Educator.
Watch or listen to all our shows anytime, from anywhere on YouTube, Facebook or your favorite streaming platform. Please like our shows and spread the word to others.
Have any questions you'd like to ask? Or maybe you have knowledge you'd like to share? Email us at megansweet@yourthreeeyes.com or visit our website at yourthreeeyes.com. Y-O-U-R, the number three, E-Y-E-S dot com. Thank you.
Class is dismissed. Wasn't that fun? Susan and Megan are always happy to greet you on the next episode of The Awakening Educator. Connect with us on Facebook, Instagram, YouTube. Education is the foundation for a brighter future. Open your eyes to The Awakening Educator.